...to Judean Town in the Hill Country where she entered the house of Zechariah and greeted Elizabeth. When Elizabeth heard Mary's greeting, the child leaped in her womb and Elizabeth was filled with the Holy Spirit and exclaimed with a loud cry, "Blessed are you amongst women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb." "And why has this happened to me that the mother of my Lord comes to me?" "For as soon as I heard the sound of greeting, the child in my womb leaped for joy, and blessed is she who believed that there would be a fulfillment of what was spoken up to her by the Lord." The Gospel of the Lord. Praise to you, Lord Jesus Christ. Waiting is an essential part to the spiritual life, but waiting as a disciple of Jesus is not an empty waiting. It is a waiting with a promise in our hearts that make us already present what we are waiting for. We wait during the Advent for the birth of Jesus. We wait after Easter for the coming of the Spirit, and after the ascension of Jesus, we wait for his coming again in glory. We are always waiting, but it is a waiting and the conviction that we have already seen God's footsteps. Waiting for God is an active, alert, joyful waiting. As we wait, we remember him for whom we are waiting, and as we remember him, we create a community ready to welcome him when he comes. Name the Father and Son, Holy Spirit.
Thank you, and thank you to trustee Anna Maria for her beautiful service. I would like to ask Vice Chair Marai to read the motion adopted in camera.
There is one motion adopted in camera. A motion regarding non-union hours of work was approved.
Thank you. There is no information received in camera as of yet. We are not finished our in-camera session, and we'll be returning there at the end of the meeting. So item number two, approval of the agenda. Any additions to the agenda? Trustee Carabella?
I'd like to make a notice of motion.
Thank you. Your notice of motion will be 10.800 information. Would you kindly...
The title?
The title, please.
Is "Upholding the Sanctity of Life Through Donations to Charities and Nonprofits."
Thank you. I think Rosie has that. Thank you. Any other additions? No? Alright, can I have a mover, please, to approve the agenda? Trustee Tritt, seconded by trustee Quinn. All in favor? Thank you. Any declarations of conflict of interest? None? Thank you. We have presentations tonight. It's an exciting night. 4.1, Canada 150 Sesquicentennial Citizen Award is first. Trustee Superintendent... I'm moving you from one chair to another, Superintendent Cassin.
Through you, Madam Chair. This evening, Tennessee, we're here to recognize Sherri Sable, our Indigenous Education Advisor, recipient of the Canada 150 Sesquicentennial Award. Our Indigenous Education Advisor Sherri has been honored with this special award, and as you know, Sherri is a valued, honorable Indigenous voice and revered leader in our own Halton Catholic community and clearly regionally and provincially. Sherri is a Cree woman from Treaty VI with a degree in Native Studies and Criminology from the University of Saskatchewan. She developed her passion for Indigenous issues through personal experience and professional life. Sherri's mother and all of her aunts and uncles were survivors of the residential school system. She comes from a family of 10 children who were all part of the Sixty Scoop. Sherri is the first generation to raise her children without government interference. Sherri has always worked for Indigenous organizations, starting with the Treaty and Aboriginal Rights Research Center in Manitoba, where she was the lead researcher in archival research. She spent five years at Six Nations of the Grand River Territory as Assistant Director, focusing on land claims research in preparation for submissions to the federal government. Sherri now works with the Halton Catholic District School Board as the Indigenous Education Advisor. She is a passionate advocate for Indigenous issues and regularly speaks about several key subjects, including residential schools, treaties, and social issues facing Indigenous people. Sherri continues to support a variety of educational initiatives in our board by providing professional development to all staff, introducing Indigenous elders, artists, performers, and traditional knowledge keepers to schools, while encouraging teachers to embed Indigenous ways of knowing into the curriculum. Sherri is regularly invited to participate on key committees and at national conferences, such as the Truth and Reconciliation Commission of Canada, the Educational Roundtable with the National Center of Truth and Reconciliation, the International Indigenous Education Conference, and treaty discussions with the Treaty Commission of Saskatchewan. She continues outreach to various First Nations communities, not only in Southern Ontario, but also in our Northern communities. So this award demonstrates that Sherri Sable's community and colleagues recognize her strong leadership qualities and her commitment to excellence. On behalf of the board, we congratulate Sherri Sable on this significant and well-deserved honor. Eko Se, Sherri.
Well, that was amazing achievements there. And now we have 4.2, very important to us, "Keeping Christ in Christmas." Ms. Bartuzzi.
So, good evening, Madam Chair, trustees, staff, students, parents, and guests. We are thrilled to present to you this year's finalists of our annual Keeping Christ in Christmas Student Contest. Over the past five years, we've invited current Halton Catholic Elementary and Secondary students to submit original work that best describes our theme of the contest, "Keeping Christ in Christmas." Each year, we acknowledge our talented students and the outstanding work that they do each and every year. This contest has become a growing tradition across our board, and we are always impressed by the creativity and quality of work that we see each and every year. Since December 2013, we've received over 1,800 student submissions, and we've increased our social media presence through this contest. We've also received over 12,100 online votes on entries using an online voting process on an application called WuBox. The response to this contest over the past few years has been outstanding, and just this year alone, we have received over 300 student submissions. So at this time, I'm just going to show you a short video compilation of submissions we received this year. So to provide you with some background information, this year, the call for submissions went out on November 9th until December 4th. There were three submission categories, so students had the ability to submit traditional artwork, original song, and short videos. And the traditional artwork was any form that they chose. So new this year, after the submission period was closed, judging panel met to review all the submissions, and this year, we expanded our judging process. So a total of four student divisions were included in the judging process. So submissions were reviewed separately according to group, which included kindergarten to grade three, grades four to six, another one was grades seven to eight, and then finally, grades nine to 12. And here's our judging panel. So it consisted of Diane Rebenda, Chair of the Board, Paula Dawson, Director of Education, Julian Federico, our System Chaplaincy Leader, Keith Boyd, President of the OECTA Secondary Unit, Lorraine Beraldo Turner, Vice President of our OECTA Secondary Unit, Nina March, President of our OECTA Elementary Unit, and finally, Tara Hambley, Vice President of our OECTA Elementary Unit. So as we mentioned before, the judges reviewed them all separately and selected a total of 12 finalists. So three finalists were selected in each of these student groups, so primary, junior, intermediate, and secondary student divisions. So after the judging panel narrowed down the submissions, the entries were posted on our website, and the online voting process began, allowing students, parents, staff, and members of our community to make the final decision on the winner of the top prize for each division. And the voting process did take place December 8th through 13th. And the results of this year alone, we received over 3,800 online votes, which is the highest number of votes we have received to date, which is great. So it's time to meet the finalists. We're thrilled that our student finalists are here with us tonight, along with their families. All finalists received a certificate of appreciation tonight, as well as an iTunes gift card. I would now like to ask the Chair of the Board and the Director to please come up at this time to recognize our finalists. So in our primary division, we have artwork of a boy taking a selfie with the words, "When I take a selfie, I hope I will see Jesus in person looking back at me", created by Kayden Koster, a grade one student from St. Dominic Catholic Elementary School. Congratulations, Kayden. Next, in the primary division, we have a collage of the nativity scene, created by Lara Gonzalez, a kindergarten student from Sacred Heart of Jesus Catholic Elementary School. Lara and her family spend their regrets as they were unable to make it this evening. We do have her artwork on display tonight here at the front. Also in the primary division, we have a short video about the different ways to keep Christ in Christmas, created by Jenna Ugu, a grade three student from St. Peter Catholic Elementary School. And before we congratulate her, we're just going to play the short clip. So congratulations to Julia. So also in the intermediate...
So also in the intermediate division, we have a short video created by Michael Yake, a grade eight student from Saint Joseph Catholic Elementary School in Acton. And we are also going to show you the clip right now. Congratulations Michael. Moving on to our secondary division, we have artwork created by Olivia Hall, grade twelve student from Saint Ignatius of Loyola Catholic Secondary School. Congratulations Olivia. Also in the secondary division, we have a metal engraving of Mary created by Sierra Pierce, a grade eleven student from Notre Dame Catholic Secondary School. And we do have a video to show you as well. Congratulations Sierra. So and last but certainly not least, we have a wood engraving of the nativity scene created by Paulina Allman, a grade eleven student from John Vanier Catholic Secondary School. Congratulations Paulina. So at this time, I will ask the president of the OECTA Elementary Teachers Association, Nina March, and vice president Tara Hamley to please come up to announce the recipients of the top prizes for the elementary divisions' primary, junior, and intermediate.
Hi everybody. So now you get to see how difficult it is for us when we go through the more than three hundred submissions to narrow it down to just twelve. And I have to tell you, the expressions that were faced that you and your fellow students here were incredibly heartwarming, they were funny, they were expressions of love and expressions of beauty. And I want to thank you because you've come with a submission for us and it's one of our favorites. So thank you so much, so much for sharing so much of yourself and that's my mind has all the different ways that we can keep Christ in Christmas. I'd like to congratulate you on behalf of Halton Elementary Catholic Teachers. Let's kind of go through the participants first tonight. Are you ready? Okay. So for the category from kindergarten to grade three, it's Lara and Solis. And I don't believe that Lara is with us this evening, so we'll have to consider that. The winner from the grades four to six division is Maya Jude Susa Ferreira. And for the grade seven and eighth division, it is Michael Yake.
Now I will ask Lorraine Beraldo Turner, vice president of the OECTA Secondary Teachers Association, to please come up to announce the recipient of the top prize for the secondary division.
I'll stand here so that's why I've got to be with everybody. I'm so honored to be here to present this award on behalf of the secondary teachers. The way you have shown how to keep Christ in Christmas in your unique and creative ways is just so heartwarming. I'm thrilled to be part of the judging panel. I really love all the submissions, and they should all win a prize. They all deserve recognition, but unfortunately, we can't have prizes for everyone. But even if you don't win a prize, remember that no one can take away what's in your heart about Christmas. So congratulations to all of you and thank you for inspiring all of us. So the winner is... Olivia Hall.
So we would like to thank all of the students who took part in this year's Keeping Christ in Christmas Student Contest. It's always so wonderful to see the creativity and passion that is put into completing these projects each year. I would also like to thank the Halton OECTA Elementary and Secondary Teachers Associations for sponsoring the contest through their generous donations of the Samsung tablet and Bose headphones for our student winners. We are also excited to announce that student submissions will be featured on the board's website and YouTube channel over the next few days and into Christmas. Congratulations once again to all of our students here tonight. You should feel very proud for all that you've accomplished. Students, if you could please follow me out to the foyer, we'd like to take some pictures. Thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you to all parents who have brought their very beautiful, very talented children to see us this evening. It was very special. So thank you. Our trustees, we will continue with our agenda. We are on number five, delegations. Five point one, revisions to the uniform policy, is Mrs. Hood. Mrs. Hood, please begin whenever you're ready.
Good evening. My delegation is uniforms as an equity issue. When we think of equity in the context of clothing, it's usually connected to workers' rights and fair labor practices. It is widely known that the textile industry is riddled with widespread exploitation, low wages, unsafe working conditions, labor violations, and lack of environmental protection. There's no need to repeat this now. The board has an above-average policy in place to ensure suppliers meet rigorous labor practice standards. However, I plan to show that we can't escape the ethical dilemma as long as the board is forcing the parents to buy additional clothing for their children. I will also discuss where the policy creates divisions, barriers, and inequities for families within the board, and I'll end with how I'd like to see the policy changed. As I said, the board sets strict fair labor practice requirements on suppliers, and the current uniforms are made mostly in Canada. So what's the issue? One policy at one school board is not going to change an industry built on profits made through volume of sales, fast turnover, and making still-good items obsolete. It's commonly called fas- fashion. Uniforms sit under the same banner because they are specialty items, lifespan limited, and sold in addition to everyday clothing. Even if the uniformed suppliers have fair labor practices, we still face with several irreconcilable ethical dilemmas. Government workers in Canada and abroad are overwhelmingly women or migrant workers. Even when fair wages are paid, there are few other benefits, opportunities for advancement, or protections for workers. Their perceived lower social status of women and migrants allows the industry to pay legal but still low wages for highly skilled work. Even with a supplier from Canada, the pay is still low. It's estimated that in Canada that fifty percent of government workers are immigrants and an estimated seventy percent are women, so the same problems apply. Just looking earlier this week, I found for even workers with experience, the average pay was anywhere between fifteen and eighteen dollars per hour with few benefits. Someone with over ten years of experience working for a designer could make twenty to twenty-five dollars an hour, but it still leaves many of the people making our uniforms in a position where they might not be able to afford them. What our clothes are made from is problematic too. Cotton is found in seventy-five percent of the clothing that we wear and one of the goods most commonly produced using forced labor in the world. Forced labor exists in nine countries producing sixty-five percent of the world's cotton. Cotton's a cash crop, so it's a gamble for farmers taking away farmland from food production, and it's subject to global market uncertainty. If crops are poor or markets drop, farmers are not even left with food to feed their families. It's also one of the heaviest users of water and pesticides, or insecticides, as far as cash crops go. Polyester presents its own issues. Polyester presents its own issues because of the refined petroleum product creating its own carbon footprint. Plastics are often said being recycled into polyester fibers as a more green options, but plastics degrade as they're recycled, which means that polyester is often the end of the life cycle for the recycled plastics. It still becomes trash. The more new clothes we buy, the more we're producing materials that hurt the earth, and those environmental impacts are felt first and hardest by the global poor through the impacts of climate change such as droughts and flooding. Overproduction of clothing is a huge issue. Globally, we're producing way more clothing than we need. It's estimated that seventy pounds of clothing are thrown away per person per year, most of which is not recycled. Two out of every ten pounds of clothing donated is sold in charitable shops, but the remaining eight pounds is purchased and salvaged by private sector recyclers. Used clothing wholesalers then ship the clothing overseas. Donating sounds great until you understand that we're still throwing away seventy pounds of clothing per year, and sixty-one percent of the used clothing donations are exported. Exported clothing is then resold by wholesalers and sold in local markets at cheap prices. The immediate charitable benefit to the poor is at the loss of long-term economic benefits from the development of local textile industries, which can provide a great opportunity for developing economies to step forward in economic growth. And because they are relatively easy to develop and a booming clothing sector is labor-intensive, it generates national revenues through taxes and it ultimately can help end dependency on aid. What this global glut of clothing looks like locally is that I've almost stopped buying new clothing entirely. Socks or underwear are the only items I have to buy new anymore. First of all, because I can't afford it and I don't want to drive the industry that ravages the earth and builds in needs that wouldn't otherwise exist. I have a network of hand-me-downs that I swap with other parents, and we're happy to get rid of the clothing through swapping and passing it on rather than buying new. And by buying from the Salvation Army, I'm funding homeless shelters, food banks, family services in my local community, as well as supporting jobs. So the clothing dilemma is that it's bad for people, it's bad for the planet, we produce too much already, and through the uniform policy, you want me to buy more. So this is really where the current policy comes up short on equity. It doesn't factor in the hidden and hard-to-measure costs or the barriers. Globally, some of the hidden costs are the economic cost of dumping used clothing in foreign markets, the carbon footprint of overproduction, losses from cash cropping and monoculture for cotton production, the greater vulnerability to abuses among migrant workers in an increasingly migrant global population, and the social impact of perpetuating the norm of low wages for women and migrant workers. Locally, some of the hidden costs are the stress on parents and then kids trying to keep kids in uniforms, the students who may have never enrolled in the board and missed out on a Catholic education because of the uniforms, the lost time to class or studying because of students out of uniform, which may be because they can't afford them, because they lost a sweater and are cold, so they wore their coat to class, or they had to choose between doing studying and laundry on a Wednesday night. The exclusion felt by students who can't afford certain pieces, for example, the really expensive rugby shirts in high schools. And funds that may have been used to help a low-income family with uniforms that could have been used to help them with winter boots or food instead. There are other major issues within the policies at Stan's that are local and concrete, and these are things the board could take action on right now. First, I want to talk about the false promises. Uniforms clothes are sold to parents with many promises, like better focus students, building a strong Catholic identity, and that's a lot to expect from a piece of cloth. Research into uniforms doesn't conclusively find these benefits. If we're hanging the Catholic identity of our schools even in part on clothing, I'm deeply concerned for the state of Catholic education. All the promised benefits of these uniforms can be met by teaching our kids the gospel and building a strong parent-child, school, and parish relationship. So what's the board's rationale for insisting that uniforms are the preferred options for its schools? Is it research-based and has the board done any internal research since bringing in the uniform policies? The lack of transparency is a problem. Parents are pouring a lot of money into the uniforms each year, some of which the board receives back in the forms of grants or contributions or royalties. It's not entirely clear what form the contributions take. It needs to be clear to parents what parents' money you're spending. And parents aren't getting a say. A change was made a few years ago to lower the vote threshold for uniforms in elementary schools from a two-thirds majority to fifty percent plus one, and the year after that, a whole bunch of the elementary schools voted in uniforms. Schools are not required to revote once uniforms are brought in unless the school council decides to have a revote. Parents who joined the Board after the last round of voting at their school will likely never get a chance to vote on uniforms if their school already has uniforms. Revotes should be built into the policies at set timeframes. I haven't had a vote on school uniforms. When will I get one? And I want to talk about support for families in need. Uniforms are expensive. They're a barrier that's been created by the Board for families to access Catholic education. Firstly, I find it irresponsible to put a barrier in place. When you have the chance to give kids the greatest blessing of the teaching of her faith, then why would you put a barrier in front of families? Why not just get rid of the barrier? The uniform policy does offer a second way in for families who can't afford uniforms, but it doesn't provide a roadmap for how to get support with uniforms. There's no clear outline of whose responsibility it is to arrange support, identify families who need support, or what that support will even be. I received support for uniforms. The first year, I was told I would receive one shirt, one pair of pants, and one sweater for my son. The second year, I was told to come to the used uniform sale. When I said I only had twenty dollars, which wouldn't go far at the used uniform sale, and I'd have to take time off work and lose wages to come, I was quietly shuffled into a back room to pick through the unsorted donations and take what I needed. The third year, my kids came home with letters for uniform subsidy from McCarthy's without any request from me. Someone just assumed my situation hadn't changed. I was offered two shirts, two sweaters, two pairs of pants per child, but with the change over in suppliers last year, all I was able to get in stock was pants. Later that year, I received some used clothing from the school after a panicked email to the principal and trustees, when my daughter came home with her jumper covered in paint.
Excuse me, Mrs. Hood. You have fulfilled your time allotment, so could you just finish off that paragraph, please?
Okay, so this year, I haven't had, I made any uniform support requests because the whole process is just too unclear and too humiliating. And to clarify, it's not that I've ever been treated unkindly, but the lack of clarity in the process makes it really difficult.
Thank you very much. Trustees, according to the Board's policy, delegation to the Board. If you have any questions that you would like to ask our delegator for the purposes of clarification, I'll be, trustee Carabella, and then trustee Quinn.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Jennifer, for speaking with us tonight. I'm just wondering, to make the assistance program easier for you, how did you learn about it in the first time, and then what suggestion do you have to make it that you would be comfortable approaching for help?
So I first learned about it through the papers that were sent home with, like, the regular school papers that get sent home when you enroll your kid for school about, it's just sort of a simple line on where to get uniforms if you need support. So I called the school, but it wasn't even clear when I called the school who was responsible for it. And it was only a couple of years in, the second year in, that it was clear that I needed to speak to the principal every year. I would like to see something that outlines what parents' responsibilities are, what the supplier's responsibility is, what the principal's responsibility is, what the school's responsibility is, very clearly and in a lot of detail, and involves parents in deciding how much they need, as opposed to somebody just telling them what they're going to get.
Thank you. Trustee Quinn.
Thank you very much, through you, Madam Chair. I think we share a lot in common with our views on the current uniform policy. Can you maybe clarify a point you didn't get to, but your request for staff, excuse me, your address for trustees to address parent concerns? And what are you asking that trustees do today?
There are a lot of concerns that were raised in the, there was over a hundred comments given by parents. And I just want to make sure that when the policy gets updated, that all of those concerns are taken into consideration, not just the ones that were put forward to do with school consolidation and closure. A lot of those comments from parents were about wanting multiple suppliers to choose from or other issues with the uniforms, and I'd like to see the Board address all of them, not just the ones that were originally asked for feedback on.
Thank you. Any other questions, trustees? Clarification? No? Thank you very much. The response to the delegation, I'll read that out for you. Section one, standard delegation. The Board's agenda shall include an action item entitled "Board Response to the Delegation at the Same Meeting." Trustees in attendance may move or approve a motion for a decision on the matter at the same meeting, a referral of the matter to a future meeting, a staff report on the matter to be considered at a future meeting, and to receive full information. And also, this is a topic that has been, I'll be with you in a minute, trustee Quinn, this is a topic that has been back on our policy agenda recently, so of course, we continue to discuss it at that point. So we will be talking to that at the action items, which will be number eight. Trustee Quinn.
I'd like to put forth a motion that we ask for a staff report to address the concerns of this delegate.
Yeah, but when I told you asked for number eight, you're not there yet.
You just said, you said that we were doing that, yeah?
Well, go through.
Okay, the response is coming in, okay.
Yeah, it will come in number eight, but thank you. So now we have approval of the minutes under six point one, trustees. Can you go to six point one, please? Page sixty-two to fifty-eight. And then it's called the summer fifth, two thousand seventeen regular board meeting. I mean, I'm trying to find it. Let's be row, let's be right. Any questions for the minute? All in favor? And please, number seven, business advice from previous meetings. Seven point one, summary of outstanding items from previous meetings on page thirty-nine, as we've had a few, all contained in the Q-8. So any questions on that? No? All right, thank you. Number eight, action items, eight point one, response to delegation. trustee Quinn, would you repeat the motion, please?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to move that we refer this to staff for a report on this presentation, particularly the questions surrounding what other school boards are doing in the Catholic school boards who use uniforms, and how this might help us continue as we work through our policy discussions about the uniform sole source suppliers, and this new information on the burden of preparing clothes.
Thank you. Rosie, did you get that? That's about right, thank you. Second, please. trustee Carabella, any questions? No? All in favor? Thank you very much. All right, so we will have that coming back. And thank you very much for coming and taking the message forward to this day. Thank you. If you have young children, just go through. Thank you. All right, continuing on with action items, eight point two, policy I dash four, strategic planning process, vice chair Murray.
I will move, resolve the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and approve policy I dash forty-four, strategic planning process at third reading.
Thank you. Second, please. trustee Quinn. Any questions to that particular policy? No? All in favor? Thank you. Policy eight point three, policy two dash sixteen, curriculum writing, vice chair Murray.
I'll present the following. Resolve the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and rescind policy two dash sixteen, curriculum writing.
Thank you. Second, bye. trustee Carabella, any questions to that? All in favor? Thank you. Eight point four, policy I I dash forty-one, student from dress code, school dress code, vice chair Murray.
I'll put it on the table. Resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and approve policy I I dash forty-one, school uniform dress code, school dress code as amended.
Thank you. Second, please. No second to that? I have a second to the policy. Okay, then fail. No second to that? Thank you. Come on, Chris, you can do that. Those are second to that.
No one wants a second to that? Okay.
Thank you. They did it last week, they're not this week. Eight point five, policy three dash ten, criminal reference check applicants for employment, vice chair Murray.
Another one we discussed last week. Resolve the Halton, and I'll move it, resolve the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and approve policy I I I dash ten, criminal reference check applicants as presented.
Thank you. Second, bye. trustee Michael. Any questions? All in favor? Thank you. Eight point six, oh, is this issue? Thank you very much. Eight point six, intermediate core French resource purchase, superintendent for Catholic.
Through you, Madam Chair. The intermediate core French resource purchase is to recommend the purchase of an intermediate resource, Mon Réseau Mavie, to be used in grade eight FSL classrooms. Trustees have before them the action report outlining the background information, the resource that represents an effective blend of content rooted in global citizenship CEFR-inspired authentic tasks, and effective second language acquisition strategies for instruction and assessment. The teacher and student resources are flexible since they come in print and digital formats. The expenditure summary is provided for trustees on the second page, and the conclusion and recommendation is to purchase Mon Réseau Mavie as the approved grade eight core French resource to ensure continuity of programming, effective implementation of the revised document, and seamless support of our Ontario Catholic school graduate expectations.
Thank you. I just wanted to set the conclusion as opposed to a motion, so I'll repeat that. I'll repeat that for all.
Thank you.
Move, please, trustee Row.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to move that the Board purchase Mon Réseau Mavie as approved grade eight core French resource to support the continuity of programming, effective implementation of the revised document, and seamless support of our Ontario Catholic school graduate expectations in the amount of one hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Thank you. Second, please. trustee Quinn, any questions? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, superintendent for Catholic. Eight point seven, two thousand seventeen, eighteen revised budget estimates, including September one, two thousand seventeen, November thirteen, two thousand seventeen actuals. Superintendent, goodbye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Trustees are presented with the final revised budget estimates for approval tonight. Since the last report, staffing confirmations have resulted in small changes to the full-time equivalent, but no overall impact to expenses, and a small enrollment change has been captured to high credits as we've finalized the enrollment projections for submission to the ministry. This resulted in a slight increase in revenues by about five thousand dollars since the last version of the revised estimate. Overall, the financial position of the Board is a positive one, with seventy thousand in operating surplus, a transfer into the operating reserves of seven hundred and forty thousand consistent with the budget estimates, two million transferred to the capital reserves, and as outlined on the table on page two of the report or eighty-six of your package. Table three, a table on page three of the report or eighty-seven of your package outlines the staffing enhancements captured since the budget estimates approved in June. Table on page four of the report or eighty-eight of the package outlines the program enhancements and one new initiative included in the budget. I would like to note that enrollment has increased by almost two hundred and eighty-seven average daily enrollment over the budget estimates, and nine hundred and eighty-eight over last year, not including international students. So we are definitely a growing Board, and we continue on this trend. With the revenues from the local priorities, we've also completed the enveloping within this report, and taking into account the local priorities, funding for staffing enhancements that have been included as part of the special education enveloping, special education expenses are within the envelope, within two hundred thousand of the envelope. Board administration and governance grants remain compliant with over two hundred thousand remaining in the envelope, and transportation, similarly to the budget allocation, the expenses exceed the allocation by about three hundred thousand. We do expect that the minimum, the increase in the minimum wage will be addressed in the GSN for two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, and address any pressures that we may have in the budget at that point. So the total two thousand and seventeen, eighteen revised budget presented for today for trustees approval is three hundred and ninety-nine point five million dollars. And with us today, we have Erin and Jay ready for any questions trustees may have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent Nagoy. So I need a mover and a second to get this on the table, please. Trustee Rowe, trustee Quinn, it's on the table. Any questions pertaining to that? We have our financial people here. All right. Resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board approves the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen revised budget estimates in the amount of three hundred and ninety-nine million, four hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars. All in favor? Everybody? Pardon me, we can go around the table, everybody's in favor, but we'll go around the table because it is important. Trustee Quinn?
In favor.
Trustee Anna Maria?
In favor.
Trustee Rowe?
In favor.
Trustee Christina?
In favor.
Trustee Murray?
In favor.
Trustee Trice?
In favor.
Trustee Michael?
In favor.
Trustee Ingrid?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the finance people, Superintendent Nagoy. And now we are on eight point eight, Oakville South Central Catholic Elementary School sketch plan design. Superintendent Merrick.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you, this is for the approval of the sketch plan designs that were presented at the last board meeting, so no changes since then. Just taking approval to proceed with the construction and planning of the project as outlined in the report.
Can you remind me what the feedback was from the residents who are in existing spots, and any concerns that they may have had on their first view of the design?
We haven't gone through the site plan approval process yet, so it's still underway with the town, but preliminary feedback that we've heard kind of ad hoc is that nobody wants the school butting against their backyard, basically. However, we're trying to situate the school in roughly the same location that the school already is at, and kind of keeping it equidistant from both the north and the south boundary on the site to keep everybody happy, so. But many of those comments will be addressed through the site plan approval process, so.
And after we approve this, does the town have to give approval to our design as well?
Absolutely.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we have Steve Allam, our manager of energy and environment here tonight, briefly walk through the project again as we presented at the last board meeting as well, so. Turn it over to Steve.
Okay, thank you. This is largely a rundown of what Superintendent Merrick discussed two weeks ago for the staff report. Proposed kindergarten playgrounds for two thousand and eighteen include eleven schools with twenty-nine already complete. The collaborative design approach that we've used up till now continues forward where the school, the Board, and the design consultant all meet together and design the play space collaboratively. Designs are ninety percent complete about now, and we are looking, just getting the on the site to keep everybody happy. But many of those comments will be addressed through the site plan approval process.
And after we approve this, does the town have to give approval to our design as well?
Absolutely.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we have Steve Allum, our manager of energy and environment here tonight, briefly walked through the project again as we presented at the last board meeting as well. So turn it over to Steve.
Okay, thank you. This is largely a rundown of what Superintendent Merrick discussed two weeks ago for the staff report. Proposed kindergarten playgrounds for 2018 include 11 schools with 29 already complete. The collaborative design approach that we've used up till now continues forward where the school, the board, and the design consultant all meet together and design the play space collaboratively. Designs are 90% complete about now, and we are looking, just getting the first issued for review drawings in the next couple of weeks. Total expense projected to be $2 million funded through available capital sources and capital reserve. We're targeting a tender for March 2018 with the completion of all projects before August 31st, 2018. Any questions?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. What percentage of the $2 million comes out of reserves versus comes out of capital budget?
I can address that one. Through you, Madam Chair. Right now, we're planning to have it all out of available capital sources. If you remember my presentation back in September on the long-term facility renewal plan, we have a number, we have up to, it's up to 10 accounts now, or 10 various funding sources. Every one of them has different strings attached to it and different ways you can spend it. We're trying to spend all the funding in the most restrictive to least restrictive order to give us the most flexibility with future projects. So right now, the numbers working at the $2 million is a budget estimate number. In reality, that number won't be exactly $2 million on the dot, so it'll come in at a different number. So we're trying to add flexibility to allow ourselves to spend from the most restrictive to the least restrictive. But right now, we see that all coming out of available capital sources and protecting the capital reserve for future projects. Because our capital reserve is our last priority to spend on because it is, you know, our own revenues and we get our own say as to how we spend that. So that's the last source of funding that we use when we're doing these capital projects.
Resolve that the Holton Catholic District School Board authorized staff to expense funds from available capital funding sources and the capital reserve for the proposed 2018 kindergarten outdoor learning play space projects and that the expenditures will not exceed $2 million. Oh, did I miss it? Okay. Oh, yes, okay, sorry. I'm ahead of myself. Okay, we're going to go to the first one, which I'm going to read now. Resolve that the Holton Catholic District School Board authorized staff to proceed with the proposed 2018 kindergarten outdoor learning play space projects. A mover and a second, please. Trustee Tritz, Trustee Michael. Any questions pertaining to that one? Trustee Quinn?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair, and I think to the rest of the trustees. Do we have concern about leaving the capital, sorry, the reserve fund open to as much as it takes to pay the $2 million? Or should we maybe ask Superintendent to come back to us when he knows that we have to go into the reserves to fulfill the payment? So we're giving a blank check right now saying, get as much as you can from the funding sources and then get the rest from the reserves if we, but we won't have another say in it after this. So if the rest of the trustees are happy, but I wanted to maybe make a motion that we just give the go-ahead for using the funding sources and then if he has to touch the capital reserves, he comes back to us to let us know and we approve that.
Through you, Madam Chair. Just to clarify, it's not a blank check, it's up to $2 million, so it's capped at that amount. The funding source, we will select the most advantageous funding source for the board and try and protect the capital reserve wherever possible. At current, given our expected revenues or current available capital funding sources as well as projected, we know we have the greenhouse gas reduction fund that we anticipate to come in in March of this year. We anticipate to have enough funding to cover all of these projects, the kindergarten projects, as well as the 2018 facility renewal projects that I'm going to present in a minute. We expect to have enough funds to cover all of those within that amount. If the greenhouse gas money doesn't come through, then we may have to dip in a little bit into the capital reserve, up to about $1 million, because the greenhouse gas production money is $1 million that we received last year. We anticipate to receive about the same this year. So that gives you some guidance on the amount there.
Through you, Madam Chair. Just to clarify, that we're just authorizing the vote right now that we approve the principle and then we'll vote on the money on the next motion.
Yes, it is the principle on this particular resolution, but the one in one minute will be on the money, yes. Any other questions on the first resolution? Okay, all right, so that motion, all in favor? Let's do the count then. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Ingrid?
In favor.
Trustee Michael?
In favor.
Trustee Tritz?
In favor.
Vice Chair Marry?
In favor.
Trustee Christina?
In favor.
Trustee Rowe?
In favor.
Trustee Anna Maria?
In favor.
Trustee Quinn?
In favor.
Thank you. Now, the second one, that the Holton Catholic District School Board authorized staff to expense funds from available capital funding sources and the capital reserve for the proposed 2018 kindergarten outdoor learning play space projects and that the expenditures will not exceed $2 million. Trustee Quinn? I'm sorry, I haven't got a mover yet, have I? Sorry, I'm ahead of myself. Can I have a mover, please? Trustee Tritz, seconded by? Trustee Rowe? Any questions to that? Trustee Quinn?
So I wanted to propose amendment to the resolution that the capital funding sources be explored first and then if we have to go to capital reserves, it comes back to the trustees for approval.
Okay, so that is your concern or is that an amendment?
That's an amendment that Chair expresses my concern.
Okay, it's an amendment, yes. Okay. Do we have a second for the amendment? Trustee Carabella? Any questions or any comments to the amendment? Okay, we're going to vote for the amendment, which means that when we know where we're going with the money, it comes back to the board. So can I? Yes.
So we were told there that it could be up to $1 million coming out of the reserve fund if we don't get some of the capital funding that's expected. So that's why I think it'd be good to have another vote if we're willing to spend $1 million out of a reserve fund to pay for these play spaces.
Okay. Did you wish to clarify on that, Superintendent Merrick? Yes.
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. Just to clarify one thing. So when we're looking to secure, you know, funds for the entire project, if we specify each, I guess each funding source, there's up to 10 in the available capital funding sources pool, if you will, if we clarify the amount, the exact amount on each one, if any one of those projects goes under budget and we wish to spend more on that amount on a different project to try and use up the most restrictive funding source first, then we'll need to come back to the board again to ask for approval to move money from a less restrictive source over to a more restrictive source. And it's really important to remember that all the budget numbers we see in the report tonight, they're just budget estimates. None of these have been tendered yet, so all the amounts will change when the final amounts on the projects will change. So we will have to come back to the board again and do kind of a shuffle to show, you know, where we're spending those funds from now on a more restrictive account. And a lot of those construction items will be happening over the summer where we don't have board meetings to seek those approvals, so.
Okay. Trustee Quinn?
So then we would take money out of the capital reserve to get these things started and then you would hope that the funding sources would come in to cover the rest of the budget? Is that your concern? Because I don't, I'm not asking that you come back to us every time you want to move from one capital source to another, but only if you say these capital sources didn't come through, we're actually going to have to take hundreds of thousands of dollars out of the reserve to pay for them.
Ryan?
There's already deferred revenue in a number of these categories that can be applied. At the end of last year, so not including any expenses to date necessarily, there's a million and a half left over in SDK funding. In part is earmarked for the school, in part is available for the playgrounds. There is a number of funding sources that we have in terms of school renewal and school conditioning improvement. And there's $9.4 million in the capital reserve. So every year, $2 million of revenue generated by the facilities department for the use of our facilities and maintaining our facilities within our operating budget is moved into the capital reserve for the purpose to be subsidizing and helping with school renewal and these kind of projects for the schools. Our schools need green spaces and play spaces. They are a priority for us. Currently, we're looking approximately at around that $1 million that we may spend out of the capital reserves if the funding doesn't come through. We do believe the funding will come through, but even if not, there is about $1 million at most that we may be spending out of the capital reserve. So just to give you some parameters of what we're looking at right now. Typically, what I've seen on our projects, our team is very efficient, it comes under budget. $2 million is the top number that we're working with. I would probably expect there would be some savings along the way, and that's why it's very difficult to say we're going to be spending exactly this amount out of one funding source per project because first we need to spend, say, $1 million out of the SDK funding stream regardless on which project it gets allocated to, and then the balance, we're looking then into other areas, whether it's school renewal, whether it's our capital reserve.
I'm just asking that we come back to the table if you have to go into the reserve fund. So maybe you could tell me what the deferred maintenance budget is that we have right now. So maybe that $1 million would be better spent on the other deferred maintenance that we have in our budget. I consider going into capital reserve to pay for green spaces. When it was presented the first time, there was government money, it was environmentally friendly, it was good for JK, there was money. Now there's potential here to go $1 million into the reserve, and I'd like to have a vote around the table if we do that, but maybe there's not an appetite for that now.
Rosie, could you read the amendment to us, please? I think that's... So are we ready to vote on the amendment? Okay. Trustee Quinn? Trustee Anna Maria?
In favor.
Trustee Rowe? Trustee Christina?
In favor.
Vice Chair Marry? Trustee Tritz? Trustee Michael? Trustee Ingrid? Trustee Carabella? But there's something going around the table.
Can you put your mic on?
Sorry. Resolve that the Holton Catholic District School Board authorized staff to expense funds from the available capital funding sources and the capital reserve for the proposed 2018 kindergarten outdoor learning play space projects and that the expenditures will not exceed $2 million as amended. Okay? Okay. So we need a mover? We did it, didn't we? Okay, yeah. All right, so that one is just left then. Okay, yeah, yeah. Okay, even though we had the one before it. Didn't we already deal with that one? When you said you wanted to come back?
We've amended the resolution, we've voted on the amendment, and now we have to vote on the amended resolution.
But doesn't that one, isn't that one now hostile? Yes. Okay, we'll go around again. Okay, Trustee Quinn?
In favor of the amended motion.
Okay. All right, Trustee Anna Maria?
In favor.
Trustee Rowe?
In favor.
Trustee Christina?
In favor.
Vice Chair Marry?
In favor.
Trustee Tritz?
In favor.
Trustee Michael?
In favor. I know your name, really. I'm just getting tired. In favor? Helena?
In favor.
Thank you, all right. Thank you very much, and we are now moving on to staff reports, nine point one.
Proposed 2018 facility renewal projects. Superintendent Merrick?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you. We're presenting the 2018 facility renewal projects for next summer, looking at a number of projects, and they align with our long-term facility renewal strategy that we presented back in September. We're covering off with this report, covering off five of the seven schools that were highlighted for 2018 renewal works in the strategy. A couple of projects that are not in this report yet is Assumption Secondary School renewal. As mentioned, we presented back in September, the Assumption project is much, much bigger than some of the other projects that we're presenting here tonight. Requires much more planning and detailed design and working at the financials. So we hope to be back here early in the new year, the January meeting, with some more details on the Assumption report and renewal works proposed for Assumption Secondary. And as well as one of the seven schools that were identified in our long-term renewal strategy for 2018, St. Gabriel's roof replacement was in that report. We've since removed it. Turns out, a lot of the roof on that school was already replaced, wasn't documented, and there's some small work that has to be done still. However, we're just going to complete that through our operating budget. So we do have the ability to remove that one from our plan since it's already been completed. So in this report, the five schools that we're looking to touch, Bishop Reading Secondary School for a budget of about $2.9 million, plus all the professional fees and contingency on top of that, looking to mechanical upgrades, heating and cooling upgrades, lighting at the site, as well as school refresh to refresh some of the worn-down items throughout the existing part of the school. And we're still hopeful of receiving funding for a large-scale addition at the school, which we'll hear back on in January 2018. But hopefully, we can kind of pair up this renewal on the rest of the school along with the addition to the large addition that we hope to take place at the school as well. Moving on, Canadian Martyrs Catholic Elementary School in Burlington, looking to do a roof replacement at approximately $1 million base cost, plus the professional fees and contingency on that roof replacement. Notre Dame, $2.8 million base with their mechanical upgrades, so heating and cooling upgrades, as well as LED lighting for that school. St. Mark Catholic Elementary School, $1.18 million, mechanical upgrades, lighting upgrades, school refresh, and we're also doing the, we have funded for a new addition at that school as well, so looking to pair those renewal works with the new addition, and also looking to upgrade that school to comply with the latest AODA standards. So looking to work with our consultants and figure out how we can incorporate some of those AODA 2025 new building code standards to bring an existing school up to standard and see what the challenges we face in bringing up a school, an older school without vintage, up to the current standard. And then lastly, St. Michael's Catholic Elementary School, about $0.85 million of base cost, looking to replace the mechanical systems, lighting, and refresh. It's a much smaller school than the rest, but looking to bring that up to par. Still hopeful of a potential new childcare addition and classroom addition at that school, which we'll hear back on in January. If we're successful again, we would try and kind of marry that, those two projects, the renewal and the new addition, together. But even if the addition isn't approved, we still hope to proceed with the renewal works for the existing part of the school, also knowing that we'll be consolidating some students from St. John's, we'll be moving into that school as well and kind of refreshing the school for the new community there. Looking to the total project expense with professional fees and contingency included is about $10.5 million. Looking to fund it through available capital sources and capital reserves. So again, similar to our discussion on the last kindergarten projects, we expect with the greenhouse gas renewal money coming through, we expect to have enough funding to complete this through available capital sources. But in the event that capital for the greenhouse gas money does not come through, then we'd be looking to go into the capital reserve for up to $1 million. And we have presented the resolutions that we will bring back to the next meeting in January for final approval and action. I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you, questions? Trustee Quinn?
I just want to reiterate my comments about the work that I have seen at St. Marguerite School, my family's school, and the school refresh went through there last year. Coming into school this year in September, it was fantastic. It was like being in a brand-new school, and I've heard comments from the parents and the staff working there as well. So looking forward to seeing these in the new schools as well.
Thank you. First, we want to discuss our last Student Senate meeting, which happened just last Tuesday. We had a very productive meeting, which we met with all the senators. We started off with a wonderful Advent reflection led by Chaplain Frederico. We started off with a wonderful, um, Advent reflection led by Chaplain Frederico and afterwards worked into upcoming events, um, regarding international students. All high schools are holding one or multiple events for their international students, uh, ranging from, from movie nights to, um, having like Christmas decoration or cookie making sessions, uh, nice games happening in cafeterias. And we also debriefed the, um, see the problem, be the solution contest and talked about how we can keep making it a better event every year. Um, just to quickly add, we also have our board council conference, um, so the packages were just released this week and that will be taking place in Ottawa from February fifteenth to the eighteenth. And I know that the three of us are looking forward for our professional development workshops and our keynote speakers.
They covered it for all three of us, so we'd just like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Student trustees, any questions for the ladies? None? Oh, we certainly wish you all a very Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. I'm sure you're happy to get there. Thank you. All right, um, ten point two, school educational field trips. Superintendent Nah.
Thank you. The trips are there before you. Most of them are spring trips that are taking place. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions on the field trips? None, moving right along to ten point three, construction report, Milton number eight, Catholic Elementary School. Superintendent Merrick.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you, uh, our first construction update report on Milton number eight. Uh, so we're nearing completion on the footings. Uh, underground services are being installed now and we're working hard on the, uh, on the low bearing walls on the first floor. Uh, so, so far, so good. I'd be happy to take any questions that trustees might have.
Thank you. Um, Ryan, are we getting a sign put on that school so that everyone knows who we are?
Yes, it's, it's in construction as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? No? Okay. Capital reports, capital projects report as of November the thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. Superintendent Nagoy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Attached is the capital projects report, uh, as of, uh, November thirtieth. It includes, uh, open purchase orders of twelve point nine million mainly for the construction of Milton number eight and, uh, the, uh, startup for the new Oakville South Central Consolidated School. Uh, the details on the construction projects are listed on pages six to nine of the report. Um, and the, um, current EDC shortfall stands at thirty-eight point nine million, which means the purchases, the purchases, uh, of land exceed revenues collected, uh, by this amount as of this date, as we collect, uh, EDC revenues over a fifteen minute, uh, fifteen year period. And, uh, myself, uh, Aaron Orjier would be happy to take any questions trustees may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Nagoy or her team? None? All right, thank you. Uh, ten point six, Ontario Student Injury Prevention Initiative. Oh, I finished that? Did I pass that one? Ten point five, sorry. Four-year Ministry Enrollment Projection and Long-Term Accommodation Plan, LTAP, Preliminary Enrollment Projection. Superintendent Nagoy. Yeah, I was cutting you off.
Another one of the long, long titles. I know, I know. Uh, this one is Fred's fault. So joining us today, uh, Fred and myself today is our new planning officer, Dylan Ganas Akera, and, um, uh, he ha- has a key role in developing all the, the work and the, the trends that are behind this report. Um, so every year around this time, the ministry requests enrollment projections, uh, for the following four years. And the enrollment projections are submitted, um, for, that are submitted in this report to the ministry for two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, form the basis for the GSN for the following year. Um, and I'd like to pass it on to Fred at this point to walk you through a brief discussion of the trends by municipality.
Thanks Roxanne, through you, Madam Chair. And, uh, Dylan can supplement too if I miss anything. Um, so a few things on this one, so I guess, uh, as I said, the, the name of the report will be shortened for next year. On the go forward, what we'll be doing is this will be, as we're starting to look at doing annual, uh, LTAP updates, this will be the first piece of our annual LTAP update, which is the preliminary enrollment projections that'll go forward and will effectively, uh, follow through until the end of the year when we have the, uh, the complete report. So this report, a little bit different from last year, will not have the full spectrum of development information, uh, available or provided within this report. That's why it's a little less thick than it usually is. But that will be provided to you in the next upcoming report in the spring. So that's just a quick little update. In terms of, uh, general enrollment trends, as Roxanne pointed out earlier, we are still in the growing trends. Um, what we anticipate for next year is very similar to what we've anticipated, what we've seen for this year with a higher growth rate at the secondary panel. Uh, right now, what we're expecting in terms of the growth for next year in elementary board-wide is about five hundred and fifteen students, a lot of this being again from the Milton environment and a little bit from, uh, other municipalities. Uh, in terms of the secondary enrollment, we're going to see another high jump for next year and that's because what we're going to see in the grade nine panel is going to be much greater than what is going to be exiting in the grade twelve panel. Afterwards, what we'll see over the next few years is, uh, just a stabilization of that trend with not as accelerated growth as the grade nines will be very consistent with what's coming out of the grade twelves. So there in, uh, the secondary panel, we're expecting about a growth of three hundred and eighty-three students. So board-wide, we're looking at about a two point five percent increase, uh, which equates to about eight hundred and ninety-eight students. In terms of municipal enrollment trends, uh, what we're seeing, we'll start with, uh, Burlington and work our way down to Oakville. So again, uh, as you all know, we've, uh, we've talked about this on numerous amount of times, is, uh, Burlington has a trend of, uh, more maturing neighborhoods. Uh, what we've seen a little bit different from this year is either a stabilization of, uh, the JK, so they've stabilized quite a bit, or we've seen a little bit of a higher uptake in the south Burlington area. Um, overall, what we're seeing though is that we're seeing a slight increase year over year and that's again just, uh, you know, additional students coming in at the varying levels of grades, not just JK, there's some coming in at the senior intermediate levels and we're seeing a little bit of growth overall. Um, so we're still below capacity, but we're very near being full in, uh, in Burlington. We've also seen a better increase in our secondary panel due primarily to better retention rates from grade eight to grade nine. Uh, we're seeing more and more that we're keeping the students that are going in as well as we're also retaining a higher proportion of students from our co-terminus boards. So that means that we're, uh, I guess we're gaining more and more prominence in our secondary panel upfront. Um, in terms of new development in Burlington, again, uh, what's remaining in Greenfield is pretty much the Alton area, which is currently, uh, being built out. That's going to be the last of, uh, what I would call the semi-detached Greenfield development. Otherwise, we have a lot of infill in terms of, uh, townhouses, semis. What we're going to see the most of in Burlington and eventually this will transpire in our other municipalities as build-out occurs further down the road is, uh, the growth of mobility hubs, as they call it, which will be a lot more high rises and a lot more density in located, in areas located near, uh, major transit hubs. In terms of, uh, Halton Hills, again, we're seeing Halton Hills that is, uh, increasing in the elementary panel. Not by a lot, but it's pretty stable, I would say. Where it's really going to hit the, the roof is when Vision Georgetown launches in twenty twenty-one, at which point enrollment trends will increase drastically as new houses come online. So again, we're still hopeful with the ministry that eventually they will give us a solution to that enrollment pressure problem. As for the secondary panel, again, we're pretty, uh, stable on that one. We're going to see, uh, relatively flat-lined Christ the King enrollments, but again, we are still very healthy and within, uh, that sixteen to seventeen hundred people place range. Uh, the town of Milton, not much has changed. It is still growing extremely rapidly. Uh, Boyne is still progressing, uh, very quickly. Don't blink, a lot of houses pop up if you do. Uh, we're going to have our Milton number eight school and I think soon after in twenty twenty, I wouldn't be surprised if we're going to be looking to the ministry for our next school on the other side of Sixteen Mile Creek, Milton ten, which remind, I'll just remind you, there is a, also childcare component there. Another thing that's noteworthy in the, uh, municipality of Milton, uh, regarding growth is the new Milton urban expansion lands. That's another twenty-eight thousand units that are coming online starting in twenty twenty-one, which will be a whole new ballgame and a whole new, uh, number of elementary and potentially a secondary school. So that's coming too. In terms of the elementary enrollment, we are continuing to see significant increases year over year. Um, elementary students are seeing about three hundred and thirty increase and secondary is again, uh, very high. I think this is going to be the last very high year for Milton, uh, as again, as I mentioned earlier, the grade nine cohort is going to be very high and the exiting grade twelve cohort will be lower, especially when we're looking at John Vanies that are just establishing itself and as new development comes in. This will be further increased as our higher, uh, grade eights that are kind of midway in the intermediate level are moving through. So again, Milton is at a high rate of growth. As for the town of Oakville, um, overall, the elementary panel is, uh, projected to increase at an average rate of about sixty-five. Now, this is certainly offset by the fact that we have St. Gregory and all that growth to the north. If you were to remove that from the total, we're seeing more of an average decrease of about a hundred and forty-eight students. So North Oakville is certainly offsetting the overall decline that's happening in, uh, Oakville. Again, that's mostly, it's, it's almost the opposite of what's happening at the secondary panel where you're seeing the grade eights that are larger exiting and you're seeing a smaller junior kindergarten enrollment entering. So that's where that rapid decline is occurring. So it's not panel-wide. In terms of, uh, secondary school enrollment, this is another case where we're seeing higher and higher retention rates, namely in the Holy Trinity area. Um, St. Thomas Aquinas east of the creek, again, it's, it's kind of hit or miss, but we are, as it always has been. But otherwise, in the Holy Trinity area, we're seeing higher retention rates. Um, Laola is also very good in, uh, retention rates for grade eight to grade nine. There's a full report at the end of this report, an appendix C, and that outline, uh, outlines all of the retention rates by school. So you can have an idea of what we're losing, what we're keeping, as well as what we're gaining from the public level by secondary school, which in some instances is, uh, quite significant. Uh, the remaining of the report you'll have, a little bit different from last year, instead of one giant table, I've provided you with by municipality table with a breakdown by total board enrollments as well as pie charts giving the student distribution. And, uh, Dylan or myself will be happy to take any other questions in regards to this.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Roe.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Um, a couple of questions. Um, as you know, um, the, um, students from the co-terminus board have, have, um, the intake at, uh, CTK has been quite large the last couple of years. And, um, so, uh, CTK is pretty full. Are there, are there plans, um, for the short term to accommodate, uh, a continuation of that trend? And then also, if that trend continues, um, what, what, do we see the need perhaps of, uh, of more secondary accommodation in Georgetown once the, once the new, um, um, Thousand Acres comes into play?
I'll defer to Ryan on the first question, but I can answer the second question immediately. We are looking to find ourselves a secondary school within the Vision Georgetown area to accommodate this. It will be a smaller school than what we're usually accustomed to and we might have to look at a different, uh, approach given the land constraints in, uh, the Vision Georgetown plan, which a lot of it's being eaten up by natural heritage and community use, which at a certain point in time, if we eat up all the residential, it kills the, the viability of the project. So we're working very closely with the town in that regard to secure a secondary school site in the long term.
Sure, thanks, thanks. Through you, Madam Chair. Uh, we, we, in the interim, we are looking at accommodating, uh, any increase, further increases in secondary students through portables at CTK. The school's already gone through two, uh, two past additions to expand the size of the school. Um, however, we are looking at other, uh, future accommodations in the south of Georgetown for secondary students. So, um, in the, in the interim, until that Vision Georgetown comes online, we'll be looking at doing it through portables and then taking off some of that pressure through, through future accommodations in the south. So, uh, still exploring options on, on, uh, how, how that would look, but, uh, that's our, our plan going forward.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. For the retention rates, what is it that helps them? Is there anything in particular that helps them or are they pretty steady over the years? Or you, you said now we're seeing an increase or that it's better than before. Is there anything that was done to increase that?
That's a, that's a very good question, through you, Madam Chair. I, the cause of it is very speculative. I couldn't explain exactly what that cause could be. Um, at the secondary panel, what we do know is that it's a very competitive market at that point in time because it is open access, as we're probably seeing with the higher rate that we're getting, uh, our students in. So, you know, it, it, it could be a, a varying number of things. It could be what we're offering is different or selectivity or what we're doing in our schools. I'm sure, um, there are a bunch of varying factors that contribute to that. Um, it could also be proximity. So a lot of it is parental choice, which is very hard to predict. But what we do know is that, you know, it's been on, uh, some of these schools have been on the increase, some of them are stable. Uh, we've seen some blips here and there where they, they fluctuate over time or, so it, it's very hard to determine why.
If I may, Madam Chair, through you to trustee Caravella, I would suggest that it's great staff, consistent expectations and great facilities.
Uh, through you, Madam Chair, I was going to add that the, uh, the effort of the principals and the, and the, and parent councils in the Holy Trinity community, along with, uh, the efforts that, uh, inviting grade eights to come to school, uh, more often. They had, uh, they had dances that, uh, for grade sevens and eights, so they, they felt part of the school community, having them at the football games. And I think the connection between the schools when they're, when they're younger has, has paid off as well as the increased programming with the AP program at, at AP and, uh, sorry, at HD. And I know, I think that's, that's helping us in the, that part of Oakville.
Any other comments? Trustee Caravella?
This one is, uh, regard to what you said about the Burlington schools. So I just want to be clear, I, you were saying that now they are at capacity because if, you know, I'm thinking a few years ago, we were ready to close with the Empires. I'm a little concerned of where all those, if it went ahead, where all those new students would be or, or have we filled up to the top? You were saying almost a hundred percent or I, that's why I want clarification. Thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair. It's, it's not just the south. The south still has empty pupil places throughout these, uh, the five schools that are there and that still remains to be an issue. Um, there has been a little bit of a higher JK enrollment there, but not enough to fill the entire thing. What I'm speaking to is the entirety of Burlington right now, uh, although we're still on somewhat of a, we're a stable track right now, but overall, we're pretty close to, uh, to full. So if we compare to the schools that are in portables, those are offsetting the schools that may not have enough capacity. So you have to really look at it by review area, which if you review the, uh, the by, by municipality, we break it up now by family schools, which may help you with seeing some of those trends a little bit better.
Thank you. I think that's what I didn't hear, that it was the, the full amount of all Burlington north and south. Thank you.
Any other questions, trustees? No? Okay. So thank you very much. Appreciate all your work. Uh, ten point six, Ontario Student Injury Prevention Initiative. Superintendent Overholt.
Through you, Madam Chair. The following report is presented to trustees to provide information on, uh, a Ministry of Education Initiative, Student Injury Prevention Initiative, and specifically the Halton Catholic District School Board's response, uh, and action plan to the latest phase of this initiative. Uh, this began back in two thousand and thirteen and was created by the ministry to make sure that, uh, student injury prevention and safety was the highest priority for, for all in our schools. The initiative involved three phases, uh, back to two thousand and thirteen, so it's been five years since this initiative occurred. Phase one looked at supporting principals and supervisory officers to ensure that student learning in science labs and technology shops, um, were safe and healthy in their environments. Phase two looked specifically at ministry labor, uh, work orders or significant, uh, safety issues, uh, that needed to be addressed and funds were directed to school boards. The Halton Catholic District School Board looked at a number of areas such as eye wash stations, guards and shields and tech shops, um, lockout equipment and training, for example, uh, and a, a number of other initiatives as well. And then we are in, currently in the last phase, phase three, where it's required for boards after they are, have looked at their strengths, um, and needs of the system to create and prepare a three to five-year student injury prevention plan. The board has a steering committee, uh, looking at this initiative and looking at the plan. They have developed a three-year plan, um, and aligned with the initiative. There's three specific areas in which, um, they are looking at. Our board has been very proactive in addressing student injury prevention, uh, in a variety of ways, through training, protocols and guidelines. Uh, the three areas that we are looking at is reviewing and establishing and updating necessary policies and guidelines that we already have in place to sh- ensure consistency, increase awareness and understanding of the student injury prevention plan among school administrators, staff, students and parents, and also to reduce the injuries, uh, across a Halton school board, uh, by a Halton school board by thirty-five percent as used the comparison of the two thousand and sixteen data we have from OSB. So attached, you will have the plan, um, that we have begun. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Overholt? Trustee Quinn.
Uh, through your analysis, was there a trend for more injuries being, uh, occurring outdoors and indoors? That's, it's my anecdotal, uh, thought that more, most of the injuries would be, would be occurring for students outdoors in the playtime and on their way in and out of schools. Is that the case, or are eyewash stations and, uh, first aid and, and that type of things, uh, more, more necessary than, than protections for kids outside in the playground?
I think they're all necessary. Um, Superintendent Overholt?
Through you, Madam Chair. Certainly, if we're going to look at the number of injuries, you would prob, you would probably be correct in saying that the outdoor injuries were higher. However, in terms of the severity of injuries, um, this initiative certainly came out of, um, a fatality that occurred in one of our, not, in one of the school boards in Ontario. Um, and certainly wanting to ensure in all areas of schools, whether it be in the curriculum areas, in extracurricular, that safety mindiness is first and foremost. So, um, certainly, we're looking at all areas of, as to how we can prevent, um, injury, um, whether it be minor or, uh, more severe ones. Uh, the report before you is presented in, to provide you information about the northeast Transition Committee in Oakville that has been established for St. Michael, St. John's, and Our Lady of Peace in regards to the consolidation that is taking place with St. John and St. Michael, and the boundary change for St. John area to Our Lady of Peace. Uh, so far, we've had three meetings that have taken place. Uh, part of their responsibility is to determine whether, um, the consolidated schools of St. Michael's and St. John's were to go through the process outlined in policy I dash fifteen school name selection process. Uh, the committee, um, the members of the committee from St. John's and St. Michael has determined that, uh, they should be going through that process, which means we need to establish a, uh, board committee, uh, that consists of superintendents, principals, principal of the school, pastor, and parent representatives, uh, to go through the regular name selection process as outlined in the policy. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Overholt? Um, Vice Chair Murray?
What was the question put to the, the transition committee, uh, to determine if, uh, if a naming committee needed to be, uh, founded?
Through you, Madam Chair. We presented the policy, uh, that revolved around the consolidation specifically. Um, it was presented to them, um, that basically that the committee need, needed to determine, uh, whether they would be moving forward to going through the process of looking at a name, the name of the selection process of the school. It did not mean that the school name could necessarily was going to change, because in, throughout the selection process, um, everyone has an opportunity to present names. So it was clearly stated to them that they were just initiating the process of going through a, the, the policy that stated it would go out for, um, the community to give priv, provide feedback and provide names. Um, it was a thorough discussion between both, uh, school members, and it was decided that they would go through that.
Thank you very much. Uh, moving on, ten point eight. I'm sorry, do you have a question to that particular issue? Go ahead, please.
Yes, thank you. Uh, through you, Madam Chair. Was that a vote, vote taken, or just a consensus?
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, it was a vote. And it was unanimous.
All right. Um, moving on to ten point eight. Trustee Carabella, your notice of motion, please.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. The notice of motion, the title is "Upholding the Sanctity of Life Through Donations to Charities and Nonprofits." Whereas on January nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen, Pope Francis wrote to the participants of the March of Life in France, "Let's say yes to life and no to death." And whereas donations are ways of asserting our yes and our no for or against institutions which support or violate the upholding of the sanctity of life from conception to natural death, be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board, because it is a Catholic institution, will not provide or facilitate any financial dosh, donations to any charities or nonprofits that publicly support either directly or indirectly abortion, contraception, sterilization, euthanasia, or embryonic stem cell research. For the purposes of this motion, public support for the issues listed above, i.e. abortion, contraception, et cetera, is not, is not support when privately expressed, but is support when publicly expressed on a website, in press material, or found in some other public area. Be it further resolved that the Director of Education will provide a list of all charities and nonprofits which benefit from financial donations from the board by the board meeting of February twentieth, two thousand and eighteen."
Okay. Thank you. And, uh, would you please make sure that Rosie gets a copy of that? She's got it. All right. Great. Thank you very much. Um, moving on, miscellaneous information. You have eleven point one, the minutes of the recent CPIC meeting, and eleven point two, the minutes of the policy committee meeting. Any questions on those? No? Item twelve, correspondence, twelve point one, from, uh, Mr. Cowan, a Miss Knott pertaining to the naming of Milton number eight. Uh, twelve point two, uh, letter from Mrs. Lorenko pertaining to, uh, school uni, uniform policies. And number thirteen, open question period. Do we have any questions? We do? Oh, you're hiding it over there. Okay. Go ahead.
Uh, through you, Madam Chair. There, it seems like it's a two-part question from Mrs. Lorenko about, um, amending the governance of policy to ensure policies required, uh, to be sent for stakeholder consultation would be reflected in the policy. And just to reply to that, um, on page two of our policy bullets five and eleven do speak to that. Um, so following any first reading of a new policy, the policy will be vetted for input through stakeholder groups determined by the director-designate typically for a period of three weeks. The timeframe for the consultation process may be adjusted as appropriate to the specific policy as determined by the policy committee. And bullet eleven, for amendments to existing board policies, input from stakeholder groups will be, uh, solicited with a simple majority of the policy committee, and the time period and process will follow the same vetting process as for any new policy that passes first reading. There's a second, uh, part to this question, um, about the uniform policy be revised, and I will have to, uh, take it back and come back and send it back to Mrs. Lorenko, and I would copy all the, um, the trustees once staff have answered that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions? No? All right. Uh, so, uh, the in camera, we have to go back in camera. Uh, so, um, we thank our guests for coming, and, uh, we'll have to just spend a few more minutes in camera. Uh, to our student trustees, we will not be needing you over the next section, and after that, it's just wrap up. But feel free to, to go back there and have, uh, food, with food, okay? Means you get out earlier. Okay? There is food and, and goodies back there, so please feel free.